Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Fairfield City Council to order. It certainly is good to see so many people in the chamber this evening. It's always a better meeting when we have our residents here with us. So, thank you for taking the time for coming this evening. Roll call, Madam Clerk, please?
Yes, Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Panduro.
Here.
Councilmember Tonison.
Here.
Councilmember Vaccaro.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Bertani.
Here.
And Mayor Moy is absent. Thank you.
Mayor Moy wanted me to let you know that she is traveling in today from the U.S. Mayor's Convention. And Mr. City Manager, what state was that in?
Ohio.
Ohio. So, I think she will be here for tomorrow night's meeting. Our invocation tonight will be by Associate Pastor Jimmy Allen from the Bay North Church and proud member of the Clergy Action Network.
Good evening. It's a blessing to be here on this evening. I bring you greetings from Bay North Church of Christ. My Pastor Mars is my pastor, and I'm Pastor Jimmy Allen. I am really delighted to be here on this evening. It's a pleasure. It really is my pleasure. Let us bow heads in prayer. How heavenly Father, we just come to you in the most humblest way that we know how. Bowed head and humbled heart, Lord. Lord, you are my Savior. You are my Redeemer. You are my help in a time of need. Oh, Lord, we come praying for Mayor Moy. Crown her head with wisdom and knowledge, Lord, in order to lead this great city of Fairfield. Bless her with good health and long life. Give her the leadership skills to take Fairfield to the next level. We also come praying for the city council to support her and bring great ideas to the table, to be beneficial to this great city. Oh, Lord, we pray for our first offenders, responders on today. Our police chief, keep him lifted up, Lord, and the remainder of the officers, Lord. Oh, Lord, we come praying, Lord, for the fire chief. We pray for his crew, Lord, that you will keep a hedge of protection around them, Lord, as they go to and for trying to bless and protect others, Lord. Have mercy, Lord. Mercy suits our case, Lord. We also come praying, Lord, that you would keep them in your keeping care. Also, Lord, we pray, Lord, let them respect all human equally, our police department. Bless our firefighters, Lord. Keep a hedge of protection around them. Last but not least, Lord, give the citizens of Fairfield courage to love one another and to help one another. In the mighty name of Jesus, we ask it all, and we seal this prayer in Jesus' name. Amen and amen and amen.
Amen. And now, Councilmember Panduro, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Please show me the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now, we turn to council reports. Councilmember Williams, would you like to start us off, please?
Sure. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Welcome, everyone, here. My city council report is somewhat brief. I would like to report that Councilmember Carr and I had about six hours of general plan training, both in, in, why did I just go blank? I think it's all the activity. We both, so three hours of that was just kind of within a meeting, just walking through North Cordelia and Green Valley. And then, we took the show on the road and was able to go out and look at these different properties. Thank you, Dave. It was, it was really great, and I feel now confident to, to make some solid decisions on our behalf. Also, I was, I came to the raising of the LGBTQ flag, and that was an amazing experience. And I'm so, it just made me so proud to be out there in that our city raised this flag for a whole 30 days. Memorial Day, Scott Tonison and I, we were at the Veterans of Foreign Affairs at the historic Solano County Building for Memorial Day. That was a wonderful event. And finally, this last Saturday was our listening tour. And I will say that, that listening, the listening tour, this was Mayor Kat Moy's idea, and it's brilliant. Every time we go to a different listening tour event, we get a different area of the city, and each area of the city has different concerns. They're all very, very different. And this is a way that you can come and, and tell us your concerns and ideas. And we have a few coming up in the next few months. And, and I don't know if this is appropriate. You're going to have to tell me, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Looking at our, I feel like we should do a do-over for District Five. Not a do-over, but an additional one for District Five. Can I make a motion for that?
What, what do you mean by a do-over for District Five?
Well, when we did District Five, I feel like we were just, am I doing it right district for you? So, when we did District Five, it, we were just getting started. We, I don't feel like we had the marketing as tight as we have it now. We absolutely didn't have the tight branding for this. And I feel like we were just trying to figure it out. And, and now, we, each of us, we're listed in our districts. So, so the motion is, could we do one in September, do District Five again, but this time have City Councilmember Derisse, you know, listed on the flyer, and, and also, our branding has changed, too. And we're, we're now including Spanish on our flyer. So, we, it's a bilingual flyer. So, it's just, I don't know. I feel like we're on a groove now. And if we could, if I can make a motion to, to add another, another tour date?
So, are you, are you moving to put that on an agenda for future discussion, or?
I don't know. That's why I said I don't know if it's appropriate.
Yeah. I, I think, Mr. City Manager, should we agendize this for a discussion at an upcoming meeting?
If that's direction from council, then we can place it on a future agenda.
I think that might be advisable, just so that we're all here, so that the mayor's here. You mentioned her, and, yeah, I mean, for, yeah, okay. So, I, I'm fine with that for putting it on a, a future agenda for further discussion? Is every, is the council okay with that generally? Okay. Looks like it's on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Tonison, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I'm just going to be very brief. We, I just want to give a shout out to the Chamber of Commerce. They hosted our, our listening tour for District Two. And then, I wanted to give a shout out to Kay and to Doug. They were at an event in Napa, and they left early to come to the, come to the listening tour, and I really appreciate that. That's all for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Vaccaro, please.
Yeah, thank you. And welcome, everybody, to the chambers. It's always great to see our chambers packed. So, anyway, I'll just, really quickly, a couple of things. Our CAP Solano, our two-by-two met on May 25th. That's our homeless committee for the county. And we're actually starting the process now of developing a structure for that, as far as, you know, getting a, some staff, sorely needed staff, so we can, you know, move forward. And so, we meet every month. It's, it's an open meeting. It's the fourth Thursday of the month, and it's at the county building over there, so everybody's welcome. So, I want to make sure that that is noticed out here from myself and Councilwoman Pandora, who stood, who sits on the committee with me. Also, yeah, Memorial Day, that was a great event. I was there, too, and a couple of other people. Just wanted to let you know. And, yeah, no, it's always, it's always a great fun. And on a personal note, I just wanted to actually congratulate my wife, who was sworn in on Friday as the president, the new president of the Phil Am Chamber of Commerce. And that was in Vallejo, but actually, it's the Solano County Phil Am Chamber of Commerce. And I know her goal is to really kind of unite the API community throughout, throughout the county. So, that's just my own personal shout-out. And that's it for me, Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carr, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You did the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilwoman Panduro, please. I'm sorry. My apologies.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I have a few things to report back. So, on Tuesdays that we're not here, some days, we have what are called study sessions held over at the PD Training Facility. And so, those study sessions have been very helpful in getting us all up to speed on different topics, one of them being our budget. And so, we did held, we did hold a study session between this last meeting and this one. And I just wanted to thank, so it was on the fiscal year '23, '24, and fiscal year '24 and '25 budget, and our 10-year forecast. And so, I wanted just to thank our Director of Finance, John Fortato, and the Finance Department staff for putting on a very informative presentation. It was, it's heavy, I'm not a math person, and he was able to break some things down so that we could better understand where our city was going, the opportunities and challenges that we're going to be facing. So, I just want to say thank you. And those study sessions are open to the public. So, when you do see them advertised, you are more than welcome to come and join us in these sessions. And I know several of you have already. So, thank you. I also attended, so Travis Air Force Base. We all know Travis Air Force Base. So, they are celebrating their 80th anniversary. And so, I attended their, they have a civic leader update that they do once a month. So, I attended that, along with their 80th anniversary bash. So, they had all the airmen out there. They all received awards. And then, we had a flyover, which was really neat. And they unveiled the logo for the Travis Air Force Base 80th anniversary. So, a lot to come with the base. They're always doing something, and we're just so fortunate to have them in our own backyard. And then, lastly, I want to give props to Councilwoman Kate Patrice Williams, because she has a business called Empower Solano. And for Small Business, National Small Business Month, last month, they held an Empower Small Business event, where they recognized and acknowledged several small businesses in Solano County. And I attended, and there was, the guest speaker was Terilyn Gray, the Director of California Office of Small Business Advocates. So, to have someone of that, you know, of that status come to Fairfield and acknowledge all these businesses that are truly the backbone of our community, everything from Journey Coffee to, you know, Transitional Home, a hauling company. So, these businesses are small, but they're mighty. And it's, we take, we took a moment to acknowledge that and recognize them in our city and in what they do for us in our community. And that is all. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Real quick, I have one more thing.
Sure, sure thing.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to put on a future agenda, possibly the next agenda, a discussion item regarding the possibility of naming a street by St. Stephen's Church after Reverend Isom, who's going to be leaving the community. And he's done a lot in our community. So, I'd like to place that on the agenda as a discussion item in June.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, second, okay.
All right. There we go with that. And thank you, Councilwoman Panduro, very much. And now, Councilmember Carr.
All right. Again, I'd like to piggyback on Councilwoman Kate Patrice. We did get, and I want to thank the staff for the six hours getting us up to speed with the rest of the council members on our training for the upcoming general plan. And I do feel more confident and I'm excited about some of the changes that are be, are going to be coming to Fairfield. Other thing is, is I, I go downtown a lot, my lunchtime and on Thursdays. We really could use the support at our farmer's market down there on Thursdays at the county yard. If you guys can get a chance to go down there, support your community, buy some asparagus, whatever it is that you want to eat. The more people we get down there, the more we can expand it and make it a better event. And don't forget about the Concerts in the Park series that's going on now. There should be flyers in the back. Even if you stop by to listen to some music for a minute, the, the community awareness and, and the togetherness at, at those parks is, is so huge. If you guys could be sure to do that and make a stop by. And lastly, shout-out from the Chamber of Commerce is downtown lunches, eat locally. Let's spend some of our Fairfield money here in Fairfield, and we can expand and make that a better, better place downtown as well, and other restaurants. That's all I got, Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And my report is brief as well. I just want to report out and say thank you to the city and city staff for hosting the Clergy Action Network Appreciation Luncheon last Tuesday. It was fabulous. We had a great meal over at the Paradise Valley Golf Club and at Legends. And we just, we just stopped to say thank you to the Clergy Action Network members who have worked for two years now, helping to support great events in the community and our residents. And so, just thank you, Mr. City Manager, and Kelly, and Esther, and everyone who helped to pull that together and make it a beautiful event to say thank you. And speaking of the Clergy Action Network, of course, June 17th is our Second Annual Fairfield Juneteenth Festival, which will be held downtown Fairfield on the county lawn all day. It will be great food, great fun, great entertainment, just a stone blast. So, it's a very family-friendly event. So, please join us on June 17th, starting at around 11:00 a.m. on the county lawn for the Second Annual Fairfield Juneteenth Festival. And I want to say, I was out with the Rolling Hills Neighborhood Network cleanup crew a Saturday ago, and walking and picking up trash. And, and what we noticed in general was that it looked a lot better. It looked a lot better than it has looked in the past. And so I want to give a shout-out to Terra Care for, we still have progress to make in Paradise Valley, I understand there's progress to make. But I want to say thank you for taking the time to do a better job, because when you're walking the precinct, street by street, you notice a whole lot more than when you're driving past. And so, I just wanted to say that. I too have something to ask to be agendized. I have been speaking with residents out there in District 6 and in the Rolling Hills area, and a big problem, a big concern, rather, is that the peacocks that are supposed to be in the Denell Habitat Center are now leaving that and going to neighborhood people's homes, sitting in their yards, because people are feeding them. And I'm sure it's out of love, but the problem is that, I don't know if you've ever heard of a peacock at 3:30 in the morning? Holy smokes, like wow. Really, it's really unnerving. And the danger is really to the peacocks, because they're crossing over Hillborne, you know, on dark streets, where, you know, people who drive high-up cars won't see them, and they will get injured. And so, I'm asking that we agendize, you know, a discussion around an ordinance that would, you know, prevent neighbors from feeding the peacocks from their house. You can feed them, absolutely, but at the Denell Center, to help train them back to the safe haven that we've built for them at the Denell Center. So I would like to agendize just an ordinance, so we can encourage the people who want to feed the peacocks, please do so anytime you want at the center, so those birds are kept safe in the Denell Center, which is the intended purpose of that facility. Okay, thank you. So please, let's agendize that. We have the Markley Lane issue agendized for the 20th of June. So I've been in contact with residents, and Matt Bedu on the Travis Unified School District Board, and, excuse me, so I'm hoping that residents will come and make their concerns heard and lift their voices up here before the City Council. Very important issues, safe routes to school, safe road conditions, so that will be a great robust conversation. And then the last thing I'll say is, well, the second to the last thing I'll say is that VIPS. Are you going to address that? Okay, so the City Manager will talk about revamping VIPS. And the last thing is that be attending a joint Travis Unified School District and City Council Subcommittee meeting on this Thursday, June 8th, at 1:00. And looking forward to talking about important issues out there, particularly with respect to the provision of after-school programming for our schools out in District 6. So that is on that agenda. That is my council report. Thank you, everybody, again, for being here. And Mr. City Manager, your report.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. So on the VIPS, what is VIPS? Volunteers in Police Services. So this is a program, for years, that our police department had, where members of the public could volunteer to assist the police department in a variety of ways. And that sort of became, I'd say, a little defunct, kind of fell by the wayside through COVID and the pandemic, and we lost a lot of volunteers. And we are reinvigorating that program, which is, I think, really exciting. And the volunteers, you know, VIPS volunteers, get opportunities to do a lot of cool things in supporting our police department. And so, routine activities that they can participate in are, you know, walking, like, say, downtown, giving a little bit more of a physical presence around the City Hall campus. Certainly, you know, security's always a big topic to discuss, you know, anywhere, particularly downtown, around City Hall campus. And then they can also do other things that may not be necessarily, you know, out on, you know, I'll say, walk patrol, which is assisting on more of the administrative side. So of course, our police officers have a lot of administrative work, that list of work is growing, especially in the last couple of years, in response to some additional state regulations. And so, you know, we can use volunteers to help with that workload, and allow our police officers really to focus on the important work that they do out in the community. So anyone that might be interested in volunteering, please reach out to Aileah Martin in our Crime Prevention Division. Her email is imartin@fairfield.ca.gov, and she can get you information. I know Chief and I were talking, and we'll be reaching out to some of our retired police officers and see who may want to still be active and participate and help us out. The second thing that I will just remind everybody of, as Councilwoman Pandora was mentioning, we have study sessions on the second Tuesday of each month. Those are generally bigger topics to discuss, where maybe in a business meeting like this, you know, you want more time to kind of talk through and discuss those issues. Next Tuesday, on June 13th, we'll be having, we'll be sort of re-initiating the general plan discussion. I know an email went out today, for those that may have signed up already, for the general plan update email list. And so, for that one, we expect to have quite a few members of the public. So we'll actually be, instead of hosting that one at the Police Training Center, we'll be here in this room, in these council chambers, for that item. And so, there's still, you know, lots of work to be done on the general plan, and a lot of good, robust discussion on what the future of Fairfield holds. I will mention, the third thing, this past weekend, I want to give kudos to our Parks and Recreation Department, as well as our Fire Department and Police Department, and many of our partner agencies. We hosted a Trucks of the Trade event out at the library in Cordelia. And needless to say, I was surprised at how many people were out there, it was a really good turnout. I know I had two little kids that were super excited to get in the helicopter from CHP and play around and touch all the buttons. I'm certain anybody that brought a vehicle that day had a lot of double-checking to do before they drove off that day, because lots of buttons were pushed. And then the last thing I'll mention is, thank you to some residents who are avid pickleball players out at Allen Witt Park. You know, last year, 16 courts went in at the tennis complex. And it was brought to our attention that there was some cracking from that work. And thankfully, Public Works went out and inspected that. It is warranty work, so the contractor's back and starting those repairs as we speak. So that should be wrapped up pretty soon. And that is my report, Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, your report, please.
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Madam Clerk, your report, please.
Yes, I just wanted to let everyone know, we still have openings for the new Landscape Oversight Committee. Seven seats are available on the Landscape Oversight Committee. And the term will be from August 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2028. You can go to our website, fairfield.ca.gov/SEATS, open seats. And, or you can contact me, and I can send you an application. We also have two seats available on the Rockville Hills Regional Park Citizen Committee. The deadline to apply for that is Friday, July 14th. And we're always continuing to recruit for youth commission. We still do have two more seats open, and I'm looking forward to swearing in three new youth commissioners later this evening. And that's my report, thank you.
Thank you. So with the Landscape Oversight Committee, there are eight positions available on that committee?
I believe it's seven. There's one from, going to be one from each district, and then one person at large.
Okay, and how many applications do we have in?
I'm not sure, Esther has been collecting those.
Okay.
But she said a lot of them were from the same district.
Okay, so I just say this because I want to underscore, this is the Oversight Committee that the City Council established to oversee the landscape lighting and maintenance issues that many of you are here and concerned about, very well so this evening. In other words, this is the citizens' opportunity to oversee these maintenance districts, so that, and this committee reports directly to the City Council, so that the unfortunate things that happened in the past regarding, you know, the landscape lighting and maintenance districts, and not having the escalators, and now having to step up and pay these increased fees, that will never happen again, because you will be on the committee. You will be overseeing this process for the city, okay? So that is me encouraging you, you know, people support what they help to create, let's go. So I'm looking for people to apply and get in there, and let's get it right moving forward together. So, okay, thank you. So now we turn to presentations, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Presentation 1, Proclamation Declaring Pride Month, presented by Councilmember Rick Vaccaro. And I believe it's to Solano Pride Center Executive Director Jonathan Cook. Yes.
Okay, well, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. And, you know, just to let everybody know, you know, this is the raising of the flag last week, the reading of the proclamation. I've been on this council 15 years, and it took a while, but we got it done. There was some pushback in the beginning, I don't know why, but there was. And so, but, you know, we did get it done, and I'm hoping we can move forward with our friends in the LGBTQ community. And I believe we will, because Fairfield did take a step forward a few years ago. So, and that, I will read this. Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Pride Month, June 2023. Whereas 54 years ago, in June 1969, a riot at a Manhattan gay bar, the Stonewall Inn, and retaliation to a police raid precipitated the modern fight for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer rights. And whereas, because of acts of courage from those who demanded justice, and for those who quietly pushed for progress, our nation has made great strides in recognizing what these brave individuals long knew to be true in their hearts, that love is love, and no person should be judged by anything but the content of their character. And whereas, 2015's landmark Supreme Court decision was a historic victory for LGBTQ Americans, guaranteeing marriage equality in all 50 states, ensuring dignity for same-sex couples, and therefore, all couples. And whereas, for every partnership that was not previously recognized under the law, and for every American who has denied their basic civil rights, this monumental ruling instilled newfound hope, affirming the belief that we are all freer when we are all treated as equals. And whereas, despite this extraordinary progress, LGBTQ Americans still face discrimination simply for being who they are, and there remains much work to do to extend the promise of our country to every American. And whereas, in memory of the 49 victims of the 2016 Pulse nightclub massacre in Orlando, transgender individuals murdered for who they are, and a history of violence against our community, it is ever more important that we continue to push for equality, protections, and acceptance of LGBTQ people everywhere. And whereas, 2023 is the 25th year of the Solano County's LGBTQ community coming together to show our pride in Solano County through service and support of the LGBTQ community and the organization known as Solano Pride Center. Whereas, during LGBTQ Pride Month, as we wave our flags of pride high and march boldly forward in parades and demonstrations, let us celebrate how far we have come, and reaffirm our steadfast belief in the equality and the equal dignity of all Americans. And whereas, the City of Fairfield proudly stands with the LGBTQ community of Solano County, and with all communities who struggle for human rights, acceptance, visibility, safety, and in the quest for full equality under law. Now therefore, I, Catherine Catmoy, Mayor of the City of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim June 2023 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Pride Month in the City of Fairfield. Thank you. Jonathan.
Thank you, Councilmember Vaccaro. Last week, it was wonderful to be at the Pride Flag Raising Ceremony. Thank you to Councilmembers Pandora, Vaccaro, Tonason, and Williams for being there as well, and to City Clerk Reese. It was wonderful to have the city poet laureate provide a wonderful poem that she wrote for that event as well, and we're happy to see that flying for the month of June. Solano Pride Center is happy to serve our community for over 25 years. We're headquartered here in Fairfield, just up the street on Empire Street, and we are able to provide services for LGBTQ youth, seniors, people living with HIV and AIDS, providing counseling and case management services, and of course, advocating for equal rights for our community. Today, I'm joined by two members of our Board of Directors, Donna Harris and Eric Stiles, as well as two members of my staff, our Clinical Director, Colin Amato, and our Communications and Development Coordinator, Sarah White, as well as one of our community members. So I will just turn it over if they would like to share very brief remarks.
I want to thank you, Assembly Councilmembers. I'm a little bit nervous, sorry about that. My wife and I have been a member of Solano Pride Center for a long time, and it's just a very proud moment to be able to see our flag flying, and to reach out with people, and to be proud of who we are, and not have to hide. And I would like to let you know that people of my age, gray hair, white hair, who have to go back into, who have to go into nursing homes or assisted-living programs, sometimes have to go back into the closet after all this time of fighting, have to go back into the closet because of fear of abuse from other residents and from staff. And this is one of, after all this fighting, and all this striving to have to go back to the closet, we want to stop it, and we want to stop the damage to our youth, and we want to support everybody, not just us, but everybody. And thank you for the opportunity very much.
Thank you. And Mr. City Manager, you wanted to say something about Presentation 2?
Yes, my mistake, Madam Vice Mayor. You asked if there was any changes to the agenda, and I'm sorry, there was one. Item 2, the Presentation, Recognition of the 2023 Water Awareness Video Contest, first-place winner. We actually needed to move that to June 20th, so we will not have that item tonight, my apologies.
Okay, no problem, no worries. Thank you. So with that, we will now turn to public comments. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Yes, thank you. Persons wishing to address the City Council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item, if you are online, please use the raise your hand feature, or press star 9 on your phone. Speakers are limited to three minutes per item. We have quite a few speakers. Our first one will be Susan Lebreke. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that.
And real quick, Madam Vice Mayor, I think you had an announcement you were wanting to make regarding LLMD ballots, and if anybody wanted to change their vote. I think we, yeah, why don't we just go ahead and read that now? I had a public comment in case anybody...
Okay, because I was going to say that before I closed the public hearing.
Let's go ahead and do it now, because then if folks were here to change a vote, then we can start to address that in the lobby as well.
Okay, sure, will do. So if any property owners need an assessment ballot reissued, please head to the chamber lobby to ask NBS for a new ballot. The assessment ballots are due before the close of the public hearing that I will be opening in a few moments. So if you need to do that, now would be a good time to head to the lobby. Please proceed, thank you. Our first one will be Susan Lebreque. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that.
And real quick, Madam Vice Mayor, I think you had an announcement you were wanting to make regarding LMD ballots and if anybody wanted to change their vote. I think we, yeah, why don't we just go ahead and read that now? I had a public comment in case anybody.
Okay, because I was going to say that before I close the public hearing.
Well, let's go ahead and do it now because then if folks were here to change a vote, then we can start to address that in the lobby as well.
Okay, sure, will do. So if any property owners need an assessment ballot reissued, please head to the chamber lobby to ask NBS for a new ballot. The assessment ballots are due before the close of the, of the public hearing that I will be opening in a few moments. So if you need to do that, now would be a good time to head to the lobby. Please proceed, thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, do you need anything? My name is Susan Lebreque, I'm here to address a major situation and possibly give a couple suggestions. On Sunday, April 4th, I took my dogs to Allenwood Dog Park, as I frequently do. And I was there about 45 minutes early in the morning. When I got home, my dogs know the routine, they go from the car to the pool. I get their food ready, they come out of the pool, they eat their food, we go about our day. On Sunday, one of my dogs would not get out of the pool, was swimming frantically in circles to the point where I had to jump in the pool, bear hug the dog, and pull it out behind the pool barrier. The dog still was displaying some very unusual behavior, hyperactivity. It got to the point where I could not settle her down, so I took her to the Solano-Napa Pet Emergency Center in Cordelia and where the vet pretty much knew right away what was going on. She asked me some very personal questions about drug use in the home. I'm a military member, we don't do drugs in my house. Long story short, the dog tested positive for meth. She came in contact with meth at the Allenwood Dog Park. So I could, I could sit here and, you know, make suggestions on what we could do that really only voters could change, such as having a district attorney that prosecutes crimes, criminals, and gives us victims more rights as, as far as addressing ongoing crime and stop being soft on criminals. But I think to be more effective here today, the two suggestions I would like to make, you can tell I'm emotional, it's only been 48 hours since this all happened, a little bit more. So the two suggestions I have, which I think are pretty reasonable, I did call the Fairfield Police Department and really there was much, not much response there. I did insist that they do something because nothing was not an option, so they did send an officer out to go look at the park. But my two suggestions are pretty simple, I think, obviously, there's some cost to them. But one is to lock the park, Allenwood Park, Dog Park, from sunset to sunrise. A lot of homeless frequent the Dog Park at night because there's an area where they can wash up where the dogs drink out of. My only, my other suggestion as well is that possibly having motion lights because police officers do frequent Allenwood Park, and if they see that the park, the Dog Park is lit, that there's possibly some activity going on in that area. So those are my two simple solutions, obviously they come with costs, but fortunately, it was a dog, not a child. There are childs that frequent the Dog Park with their families. So my dog will be okay. So this is actually probably a blessing that that happened, and I'm here speaking to you today because actually now you could take action to make this park safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Theda Peck is next and to be followed by Pat Sevigliano.
It's on the PVMMD, it's not a public, it's on item four?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, so you want to speak on item four?
Yes, please.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so the next one will be Pat Sevigliano.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
I guess the petition that my daughter delivered to you last month didn't move you, so I'm back. Sorry about that. I'm here to talk about the proposed Waterman Highlands Landscape Maintenance District. First of all, I'll say, the, I think it's patently unfair to everyone because the rates have increased so much for everyone, but I'm here for myself. My husband and I have two parcels in that district. One parcel borders Hillborne Road for about 20 feet, and there's no landscaping there. The other parcel borders Hillborne Road and continues up to the fire station where Vista Grande is and around the corner on Vista Grande to city property. There's no man, maintained landscaping on either of those either. But on the landscape, on this parcel, we have landscaped our own length. Where the house sits, to the backyard of the house, it's about 100 feet or so, we've landscaped down to the sidewalk. But beyond that, there's about 400 more feet up to the fire station, which is not landscaped, just weeds. The, in my opinion, my humble opinion, the consultant used the same cookie cutter approach and methodology that's been used across the state and other districts, and I've talked to other people about it. This cookie cutter approach has not allowed for special circumstances or individual analysis of individual cases. Our two properties, I feel, are unique in the following ways and require extra thought and consideration. Number one, in respect to the parcels that are actually in Waterman Highlands area, the city landscaping abuts to their back fences on Hillborne and Waterman. Our two parcels do not abut to nor are anywhere near city landscaping at any point. The landscaping is totally out of our line of sight. Number two, the city landscaping goes down to the sidewalks on Hillborne and Waterman, the ivy and the trees. There's no city landscaping at any point on our property where it borders city street of Waterman, I mean not Waterman, of Hillborne or Vista Grande. Therefore, no city landscaping down to the sidewalk in those areas. As it is in the case for all the other Waterman Highland Properties districts which border Hillborne and Waterman, their landscaping goes down to the sidewalk. We have no landscaping down to the sidewalk, except a small portion that we have personally done. Three, I think the rationale for determining, determining special benefits is very flawed and is patently unfair. And quite frankly, no matter how many obscure studies are quoted, I think that few, if any parcel owners would agree that a larger lot size equals more special benefits.
Sevigliano, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up your time now, please.
Okay.
Sorry. Four minutes.
Okay. Okay, our property goes all the way down to the sidewalk, the city has easement of a specified number of feet. Again, there's no landscape in that easement area, but in the easement areas are the Waterman and Hillborne for the other area, it's landscaped. Anyway, our two parcels, I feel, should be excluded from the Waterman Highlands District. The original intent was to put apartments there by the builder, that didn't happen, the land sat vacant. 10 years later, we come along and buy the property and from the developer and have houses built, and we received absolutely no benefits from the landscaping, none whatsoever.
And you're at zero time, so you want to give a final comment there?
My final comment is, I would like to be excluded from the Waterman District, and I'm hoping that the ballots will come out as no, so that's, otherwise, you know, unless, if this goes through, unless some money falls out of the sky, my husband and I most likely will have to lose our houses because we're retired, limited income, we can't afford that.
Thank you.
And I wanted to give this.
Thank you.
And Madam Vice Mayor, this was a comment, I guess, on item 17, so if you want to instruct your fellow councilmembers that they should consider this comment when you get to the public hearing on item 17, and ask the clerk to move that comment as a comment to item 17.
So be it, colleagues. Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Next, Madam Clerk?
Yes, next speaker is Jeff Traeger, to be followed by George Kennedy.
Is this the Jeff Traeger who helped Tina Turner start her solo career, I heard this evening? Is this the same Jeff Traeger?
Yes, it is.
Hi, Jeff.
It was a pleasure to be a part of her life. I mean, this was, this was an exceptionally gifted woman, not only as entertainer, but as, as, as a human being, so.
Agreed.
Thank you. This is what's going on at the Downtown Theater. We just came off a sold-out show with Christine Gambuto, the great Filipino comedian, and we hope to get her back. Crazy, I Follow the Pieces, Walking After Midnight are some of the great songs that Pat C. Klein made famous. And then on the 17th, Joni Morris, who's been doing this for 25 years, going around all over the country and putting on tributes to Pat C. Klein. She'll be doing a one-woman show, actually it's three pieces, but that's the 17th. Boy, I'm going to be busy on the 17th. I think I'm Superman, but I'll, I'll pull it off. Anyway, and on the next, this coming Friday, on the city lawn, we've got Hey Jude, the Beatles Tribute Band, and a couple of weeks ago, we went out to Dover Park and we had it, even though it was windy, we had a nice little turnout there, so thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
Next, we have George Kennedy, to be followed by Deborah Stewart.
Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, George Kennedy. I'm just here tonight to remind everybody, as a Vice President of the Solano County Fair Association, which is a 501(c) charitable organization. The upcoming Annual County Fair celebrates Solano is the 15th through the 18th. We're going to be celebrating all things Solano. The Junior Livestock Auction will take place, as usual, on Saturday afternoon. We're going to have the Lucha Libre Wrestling this year, which is a fusion of American wrestling and Mexican wrestling. We're going to have Out at the Fair, which is celebrating diversity and inclusion. And Thursday, Thursday is our Ag Day. We've combined our Ag Day with, with the fair, so all-day Thursday is free admission for everyone, with special emphasis on agriculture, with kids, with a lot of exhibits, and teaching about agriculture in our, in our county. Also, one of the big exhibits this year is we're doing a STEM/Steam exhibit that'll take up several thousand square feet in the main pavilion, where kids will be able to have a hands-on experience with STEM and STEAM exhibits. So I hope to see you all there on Thursday night. And Saturday will be our annual fireworks show sponsored by Jelly Belly, so thank you.
Thank you. Next, Deborah Stewart.
Councilmembers, Vice Mayor, City Manager, Attorney, and Clerk. I'm here as a concerned citizen and resident of Lincoln Street, where a group home housing registered sex offenders has opened. This home is in the midst of a street filled with young children in close proximity to preschool and ends at Fairfield's Union Unified School District School, right here in the Matt Garcia Center. The neighborhood nor schools have had any idea that such a group home was opening, which understandably has caused a great deal of confusion, fear, and anger over the situation. I know that this is not on the agenda, so I would like to request that the following items be placed on an upcoming city's council agenda to allow time for the city council to research and then address the concerns and questions of the residents regarding the Ludken Street Group Home. Information regarding the notification of the Fairfield PD and the Solano County Sheriff's Office of group homes being opened and operating in the area. How's this notification done, by whom, and what is the policy? Who has oversight of these group homes and the businesses that operate them? Are they required to be permitted and licensed in Fairfield and Solano County or by the state? I wasn't able to find that information. Does Fairfield have any formal ordinances that address residents' restriction for registered sex offenders beyond the automatic restrictions applied under Penal Code 3003.5 subsection B? Can the city implement Prop 83 Jessica Law stipulations, which also allows municipalities, sorry, stumbled over that, to enact residency ordinances addressing additional restrictions beyond parks and schools? The above ordinances are mandatory restrictions of sex offenders deemed high-risk, convicted of lewd acts on children under 14, and continuous sexual abuse of children. Four of the new residents on our street are, fall into that category. Examples under these provisions, additional restricted areas would be things such as the civic and community centers, which ends right at the end of our street, daycare facilities, libraries, public pools. These are just examples of what other cities have implemented for other 290 parolees. Is there any corroboration between the Department of Justice, California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, Division of Adult Parole Operations, and our city and county agencies?
And you have 30 seconds to wrap, please, thank you.
Are the procedures or protocols in place to address and determine if the residents have been placed accordingly by risk assessment and restrictions? And how is it determined if they are supervised effectively and by with whom? One of the occupants has already been arrested for a parole violation, which causes the neighbors to believe that they are not supervised. I would ask also, and feel that it would be beneficial to the community, to have additional public information meetings with representatives from all agencies, presenting their roles and responsibilities in these matters.
Okay, I need you to wrap up, ma'am, please, thank you.
This is not an isolated incident, as we've already seen registered sex offender placements past and present in our area cause public safety concerns. And we look forward to working with the city council on helping us find this information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Brian Lynch, to be followed by Josh Patton.
I'm glad I'm going after the young lady that just spoke there. I'm going to speak a little bit about that also, but Madam Vice Mayor, good evening to you, Council, good evening to you all.
Good evening.
Shoot. I realize that I do recommend having another listening tour in District 5. I couldn't make the last one. Hopefully I'll be invited to the next one. I don't know my, if I'm allowed to come back because I won't be a resident, but I think public comment, I will be. Shoot. So, I am back because of Saturday. We had the listening tour on Saturday, just tells me I'm just not done after all the speeches I've given up here. I just don't know that the city's getting it, and now I see that Sacramento is taking advantage of the city also. They are taking advantage of us because there are, let me just get, hold up here. Oh, show me Sacramento, realize they can take advantage of Fairfield. The two examples are the recent sexual offenders' houses, one of them on Waterman. I didn't follow that one, apparently they got rid of that house. I'm going to say they got rid of that house because the residents in that area, if you look at the homes, the houses are taken care of, the front yards are taken care of, the landscaping is okay down Waterman, so the residents have a sense of security in that area, they have a sense of community, they're cohesive, and they came together and got rid of that house. This house on Lincoln Street, though, I have my doubts about it, I really do, because I told you before, 80 to 95% of them don't take care of their front yards. There's that fear and distrust in the area. I think that's going to relate to them coming together, not being as cohesive, I think it's going to have, you're going to have a problem. Even this lady, I think she will be very good for the, the house there and standing up against it. I would like to see something, because those people do have to stay somewhere. Maybe she can figure out some way to have them house them there, but Sacramento's just going to keep coming here because the city is not in control. I've told you this before, with the parks, the landscaping, the vacant lots, and I told them the graffiti art, I'd like to see that, but also the, when I say staff involvement, I do mean communication. Mr. Tonason was at my going-away party here a couple of weeks ago, he got a little earful from some of the, some of the neighbors.
A little?
Yeah. Some of the neighbors talking about the new work on Tabor Avenue. I hardly, I know about it because I stay in touch, I have an idea what's going on, other people. Other people, they have no clue. They're residents, they aren't getting your emails, they aren't looking at Instagram, Facebook. They have no idea, they're up in arms about it.
I need you to wrap in 20 seconds, please.
Very good.
Thank you.
So, I will wrap it up with, I'm not sure how I'm gonna proceed here. I would like to stay involved. I've done a lot here already. It's hard to let it all go. So, you may hear from me, you probably will hear from me in some way, and I may come back for public comment. I also want to say that the residents in my area are going to miss me. I can see it already. They had someone listening to them. That's what they need.
Thank you.
Okay? Have a good night.
You too, thank you.
Our next speaker is Josh Patton, to be followed by Alex Lunine.
My question is, can we put more hours on the city, on the physical transit? And try to see micro-transit situation working better? Because I would like to help more people out by teaching them how to ride on the buses.
Is that, Mr., excuse me, is Mr. City Manager, is there anyone he can talk to in the audience right now, possibly? Regarding the transit?
Yeah, I see our Transit Manager, Diane Feinstein, is in the back row, and I think she would be more than happy to speak with you, Josh.
I know Diane, and I know Ron. They're gonna, they're trying to help me become a empathic for spiritual transit. And I'm also trying to get with my day program and teach my friends from different day program sites to teach them how to ride on the city bus.
Okay, our next speaker is Alex Lunine, to be followed by Sheila Tucker.
Madam Vice Mayor, members of the Fairfield City Council, thank you for letting me speak tonight. Quickly, I just want to touch on what the last person talked on. My name's Alex, I'm with the nonprofit Sustainable Solano, and our primary work here in Fairfield deals with air quality issues. And a big part of what we're trying to do involves trying to get more people to actually take public transit instead of personal vehicles. So, if you wanted to get in touch with me after, that'd be great. I'd love to coordinate that effort with you. But as far as the city council goes, a few months ago, at the end of 2022, the city approached Sustainable Solano, us, about the possibility of getting a community garden in along the intersection of Illinois and Webster Streets. So, Councilmember Tonison, District 2, for you. And we're really excited to get this going. It's about, it's a little less than a half acre of land, of city land, and we're hoping to also get access to around a quarter acre of Caltrans land. We have the expertise, we have the time, and, most importantly, we have the funding to get this garden put into action. And, you know, to provide the community, who, according to the USDA, is in part a food desert, and help them grow fresh produce, like, and be more self-sufficient and sustainable. That being said, you know, the main barrier is that we can't have a community garden without community. So, I'm asking, you know, councilmembers and the city at large, if this is a project that would interest you, if you want to join on and support it. We have upcoming meetings on this Sunday, so June 11th, from 11 to 12; June 17th, 11 to 12, both at that intersection, Illinois and Webster Street, along with a trash pickup to help clear some of the debris, as it is right next to the freeway, on June 25th, from 10 to 12. And also, flyers available here, if any councilmembers would be interested in taking them. And for any community members who'd be interested in supporting this garden, learning more about it, and getting involved, I'll be in the back, and I'll have flyers there, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
And how many?
And our next speaker is Sheila Tucker, to be followed by Bill McCombe. Oh, okay.
Good evening, everybody. I know how hard you guys work. I was an official for 30 years, so I know what you guys went through and are going through today. But I see this ballot, and I want to laugh. Because when you all get voted, your names, you don't see the who voted yes or no. Not the governor, not the mayor, nobody. This is an illegal ballot, because you don't have the right to know how everybody voted. And your city manager and your attorney should be telling you that, not me. I don't get into politics anymore. I've been out, and I'm enjoying the free world, but this is not right. This is not right. And I know you guys had to talk about this. There had to be some talk about this. Call Sacramento. They're gonna tell you the same thing I told you. I'm not against a ballot. I'm against who knows how I voted. When you vote for governor or anybody else, President of the United States, the ballot is, here we do, mail-in ballots. The ballot is cut open, the ballot goes into the box. The letter sits over here. So, at the end of the day, you can count how many ballots went in and how many ballots were in that box when they're counted. So, I don't know what you guys are thinking about. So, please give me an answer. You can't. You guys know that's the truth. Now, I've been living here 25 years. I never came here about nothing. But when I saw this, I could not believe it. We're not in Russia, we're in America. So, I'd like to have some comments from you, Madam Mayor.
I would have to defer to our city attorney on this, on the, I guess your issue is one of confidentiality, obviously.
That's exactly right.
And, Madam Mayor, I would ask that we defer this to Item 17.
Okay.
This is the comment for Item 17. This is the public comment period, so we can defer this comment to Item 17. And if the council's pleasure is to bring the comment back up, we can address it then. But right now is the time for public comment. The proper time to have made this comment, as this official should be aware, would have been at Item 17.
Good enough. I will defer to my city attorney.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Have a blessed day, you guys.
You too.
Okay, I think the rest are for Items 4 and 5 and 17. And there are no hands raised online.
Okay, so now we will turn to the Housing Authority. Madam Secretary, if you would?
All Matters, oh, I need to read a statement first.
Housing Authority.
Yes, I know. Oh, I don't have the statement that I usually read about, that councilmembers are...
The holding of a joint meeting of the city council and Housing Authority entitles the councilmembers to receive an additional compensation of $35 for attending the joint meeting.
Yes, thank you. My copy cut, cut it off. Okay, and then, "All Matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the authority or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item."
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Roll call?
For the Housing Authority, as commissioners.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Tonison?
Here.
Commissioner Vicaro?
Here.
Commissioner Panduro?
Here.
Vice Chair Bertoni?
Here.
And Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Thank you.
And then the Consent Calendar Notice? The Housing Authority Consent Calendar Notice?
I read it already.
Okay, all right. Do we have any public speakers on this item?
I don't have any cards. Did anyone want to speak on Item 3? Okay, and no one's online.
Okay.
Oh, wait, there's one hand raised online. Let me make sure it's for Item 3. Whitney or Valeria, can you confirm that they would like to speak on Item 3?
Okay, you're allowed to speak?
Yes, my comment wasn't necessarily on Item 3, but just a general question, which is around...
Well, sir, this is for Item 3. The Housing Authority.
So, I missed the open session, is what you're saying?
For public comment, yes. When I looked, there were zero hands raised when we concluded the public comment. Okay, so there are no speakers on this item.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the Housing Authority Consent Calendar?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So, I will adjourn the Housing Authority and reconvene the meeting of the Paradise Valley Maintenance and Monitoring District.
All Matters listed on the consent calendar for PVMMD are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the PVMMD or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
Thank you. Do we have any public speakers on this item?
Yes, I have Theta Pec.
Please step forward, Mr. Pec, or Ms. Pec.
And I have two others.
Madam Clerk, do we have speakers as to Items 4 and 5?
Theta Pec says 4 and 5, and then I have two others for just 4.
So, Madam Chairwoman, if we can pull Items 4 and 5 from consent, it will need to vote on each individually.
So pulled.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First off, I wanted to thank Public Works, Brian and Chris. They sent Rick and I the budget for the, for Item 4, which is the Apex Contractors Service. And I'm glad they did, because the budget was cut when we questioned it and brought our concerns about it. It got cut almost in half for the upcoming budget. And this kind of brings into question why we need to have an Oversight Committee for the PVMMD. Three to five residents. Because I don't believe any of you live in that district, in our district. And I think it would be very, very beneficial to have a formal committee to address the issues on a continuing basis and work with the Public Works people to formalize the residents' interests and concerns to you as a board. So, I'm hoping that can be brought up in an agenda item as to, and I think Rick's gonna speak more in detail about it, that we need to have an Oversight Committee for this district. Because in the past, it has been ran, it's been managed or mismanaged, I should say, to the point that the residents, for 10 years, were over-assessed. And it's just now, since Ryan and the new Public Works people, Chris, have taken it over, that it's actually getting managed correctly. And it actually has a good budget. The residents are the ones who have a vested interest in what happens in this district. And, like I said, you guys don't, and I really, other than maybe a couple of you, a lot of you don't even know what the GAD is and its history, and how it's been managed the last 10 years, 12 years. So, I'm hoping that it could be put on a future agenda item. And Rick's gonna talk a lot more about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
This gentleman, for his name, said "don't matter." Can you speak into the microphone, sir?
I was just saying, you know, I don't think I speak falsely, because if I really did matter, I wouldn't have to speak about this issue. Anyways, sorry, just let me let it go. I strongly urge everybody on the city board to really reject this matter. I find this Prop 13 property tax limit dodge of an assessment of travesty, the city made $184.6 million in total revenues, and could only claim that it spent $163,964,000 of it for that year. So, that's a $20 million, $622,000, $138 net gain in cash just for, you know, the 2022 year. How can the city possibly say it has no money to maintain the streetlights, trees, and landscape improvements? And why is the city charging an assessment payable only by Paradise Valley Parcels if the city is responsible for street lighting, street trees, and other landscape improvements for the rest of the city? Whatever happened to the $35 million property taxes paid out and another $30 million sales tax and all the other millions in fees and fines you gather, which supposedly should cover whatever maintenance is needed? Shouldn't equally important taxes provide for equally available services? Furthermore, what about the Paradise Valley Master Association? Aren't they supposed to take care of these things with the dues? As far as I know, they pay for the pool in the play area for the children, and the pool seems to be closed most of the time, anyway. And why is there even a so-called Homeowners Association of Dues paid to that entity if they never maintain any of the street lighting, street trees, and other landscape improvements? And don't even own the streets, or provide gated walls, or even have a proper permanent meeting place, as required in the Davis Sterling Act regarding obligations of boards and property managers towards common interest developments? Oh, and the golf club, by the way, doesn't count as a permanent meeting place. Sorry. It's an illegal association by State of California statutes, just for your information. The city of Fairfield has pure cash investments from governmental and business-type fiduciary funds at the year-end of June 30, 2022, of $397,564,615, as well as local agency investment fund and other investments to the sum of $386,225,776.
Sir, I need you to wrap in 30 seconds, please.
And we haven't even gotten how much money is slushing around in all the sub-entities or in the county as a whole at large, but that's a topic for another meeting. For the record, though, the county has $1,949,580,036 in total cash investments. Now, if you all are really miserly, why not just ask for a handout from the county? Why tax the residents of Fairfield anymore in such dire economic times as these? Furthermore, if just the increase amounts to $10,000 a week...
Sir, I need you to wrap, please.
Somebody, please give me some time, so I can continue.
No, your time is up, sir.
Yep, okay.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers, Madam Vice Mayor, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, and Madam City Clerk. You did a great job in establishing the Landscape Committee, which is going to do a nice deep dive and be very, very helpful for the council, be very helpful for city staff, and be most helpful for the residents themselves. They'll have additional people that are gonna help them. I'm coming here tonight to ask you to please use that same concept and establish an Oversight Committee for our GAD. This would be an opportunity for residents to participate and be in the weeds, literally, to be able to stay very deep in the facts, to be able to spend the time that it's difficult for city staff. They are doing so many hundreds of things that they could definitely benefit. The ad hoc committee that Theta and I have been serving on, we were able to do those deep dives into the documents that were provided by the new contractor. Two documents alone, Theta and I came up with 103 requests for clarifications or suggestions. We had the time for that. So a committee that would be able to oversee the small niche, we could spend the time to ensure that the best possible actions are going forward, to bring the information to you, the Board of Directors, for your consideration. We would be your eyes and ears, in the weeds, basically. So if you could agendize this or make it as a request to the city staff to initiate, there are those of us, Theta and I, would love to help formalize that and whatever we can do. This is an opportunity for more facts to come out, and again, for better results to occur. We're also very adept at community engagement, which is one of our main requirements or goals in the city. And we are very good at doing that as committees, and we would like to continue that going forward. So I appreciate your work, your efforts, and that's all I've got. And no handouts this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any other speaker cards for items four or five. Did anyone wish to speak? Okay, and there are no hands raised online.
So shall I entertain a motion to approve, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, I would recommend you take item four first. Either approve it or deny it, or do whatever you want with it, and then take up item five just to make sure there's no additional speakers as to item five, and then take up that item.
So take item four first?
Yes.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve item four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously.
And I don't have any speakers for item five.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to approve item five on the consent calendar. Okay, do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, carries unanimously.
I'm sorry, who gave the second? Thank you.
Okay, so I will adjourn the PVMMD and reconvene the meeting of the City Council. And now for the consent calendar, Madam Clerk?
Yes, all matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the City Council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
Thank you. Do we have any public speakers on any of the items?
I do not, and there are no hands raised online. Did anyone wish to speak on the consent calendar? Okay.
Seeing no hands, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Thank you. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we'll now turn to new business. Item 16, please.
Yes, minute action approving mayor's appointments to the Youth Commission and the Solano Commission for Women and Girls. So we need to vote first before I administer the oath.
Do we have any public speakers on this? I assume not.
I do not.
Okay, thank you. So I will enter, you want to do it before the motion, or?
You need to vote before I can administer the oath.
So I will, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments. Thank you. Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just marking that Scott was absent. Okay, let me call up the names.
Okay.
This will be Javir Chadri, or it may be Javier, Madison McCray, McCree, Alex Sevilla. And those are the youth commissioners. And then we have one from Solano Commission for Women and Girls, Edwina Perez Santiago. So if you can come up into this area, I'll join you there.
Good evening, youth commissioners. Congratulations. Would anyone like to say anything to us? Would you like to just take the mic and just say hi? Introduce yourselves, tell us where you go to school, and why you're on the Youth Commission? You can use this mic over here so everybody can see your beautiful face.
Hi, my name is Alexis Sevilla. I'm 16 years old. I go to Vacaville Christian High School, but I live here locally in Fairfield, and I'm just really excited to be able to be a part of this Youth Commission and encourage improvements and modifications if needed to improve the life of those that live in the City of Fairfield. Thank you.
Awesome.
Hi, my name is Madison McCray, and I am thrilled to have this opportunity to join the Youth Commission. I'm 14 years old, and I attend Rodriguez High School, and I really hope to help make a difference in my community by joining this council.
Amazing. Awesome.
Hi, my name is Javir Chadri. I'm 14 years old, and I go to Rodriguez High School, and I'm thrilled to help the community and advocate for the issues that we have and serve you guys.
Ladies and gentlemen, a hand to our future. Oh, my God. Outstanding. Amazing.
Very impressive. I just want to check, is Edwina here for the Solano Commission for Women and Girls? Okay, she is absent, so I will be honored to administer the oath to these three bright stars. Okay, if you could all raise your right hand and repeat after me, and we'll start with aye, and then say your individual names. Aye. Say your name. Great, and then now you can say it all together. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Great. I'll give you your certificates, and then maybe your parents would like to take photos. And you all get jelly beans and city pins. Grab one of the jelly beans. Congratulations. Maybe get closer? Oh, that's a nice idea. Thank you. And I'll post a photo on our Facebook page tomorrow, too, so you might want to start following our Facebook page if you don't already. Thank you.
All right, that is good news. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now, item 17, please.
Oh, you know what? In all the excitement, I forgot to have them sign their oaths. Can they come back to sign their oaths?
Oh, come back, youth commissioners. Come sign your oath, please.
Congratulations, Madison.
Thank you. I'm very excited.
Congratulations.
Thank you, parents. Job well done.
Thank you. Alexis, or Alexa? Alexa. Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, now we'll turn to the public hearing, item 17. Thank you.
And do we have a presenter here?
Item 17?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just waiting because Doug stepped away.
Oh, okay.
Okay, item 17, public hearing. Public hearing to consider resolutions 2023-139 through 2023-147 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield declaring the results of the assessment ballot proceedings, approving the fiscal year 2023-2024 engineers' reports, ordering the formation of the districts, confirming the assessments for fiscal year 2023 to 2024, and taking related actions in connection with proposed City of Fairfield Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District's numbers. 2023-1 Gateway, 2023-3 Waterman Highlands, 2023-5 Rancho Solano, 2023-6 Pepper Tree, 2023-7 Rolling Hills, 2023-8 Colib Estates, 2023-11 Paradise Valley, 2023-12 Downtown Business District, and 2023-13 North Cordelia. And our presenter is Chris Lewis, our Public Works Senior Management Analyst.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the City Council. It has been a long journey over the last two years, at times challenging, but nonetheless very productive and a very vital process to make sure that we're serving our communities to the best of our ability. We have nine landscaping and lighting maintenance districts that do not have sufficient assessment revenue to be able to fund the services at the current levels. But the city has been engaging these communities over the last two years to give property owners the option to form a new district, or essentially a replacement district, that would provide sufficient funding for these services. As the first step in the formation process, council initiated proceedings to form these new districts on April 18, and ballots were mailed to property owners that same week. And tonight, as the next step in the formation process, council will hold a public hearing to consider the resolutions mentioned in the title. I'd like to remind council and the property owners, this was mentioned earlier in the meeting, but the assessment ballots are due today prior to the close of the public hearing, and another final announcement will be made later on in this item. With the assistance of our City Attorney's Office, I do have a few prepared statements to read regarding tonight's proceedings. These assessment district proceedings are being undertaken pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972 and Article 13D of the California Constitution, which is also known as Proposition 218. The city mailed notice of the public hearing to the record owner of each assessable parcel, lot, or parcel in the proposed districts at least 45 days prior to the date of this public hearing. As required by law, each notice included an assessment ballot and a summary of procedures for the completion, return, and tabulation of assessment ballots. And tonight, the City Council will receive written and oral testimony from all interested persons prior to the close of the public hearing, public input portion of the public hearing. Assessment ballots may be submitted, withdrawn, or changed. End of statements. Finally, the ballot tabulation, just to remind everybody how the flow of this meeting and tomorrow will go. We'll hold the public hearing tonight. The ballot tabulation will be, will take place tomorrow, June 7, at 9:00 a.m. right here in the council chambers. The tabulation process will be open, available to the public for viewing, if you'd like to come in and keep us company while we count. And then council will reconvene tomorrow evening at 6:00 p.m., again, right here in council chambers, to announce the ballot results, and to also consider the formation, or abandon proceedings if necessary, to consider the formation of these districts. So this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions. We also have our consultant, Sarah Mayers from NBS, to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So colleagues, what is your pleasure? Shall we take comments before I open the public hearing? Okay, very good. So, Madam Clerk?
I believe you need to open the public hearing so we can hear comments.
Yeah, that would be, comments would be the public hearing. And Madam Vice Mayor, when you open the public hearing, I do have one more legal statement I need to make before you call.
Okay, so I'll open the public hearing, then we'll take the public's comments, and then we'll talk, we'll have our conversation. Okay.
And Madam Vice, I'm sorry.
I will open the public hearing.
I jumped the gun, sorry.
No problem.
Under Government Code 53753 subsection E2, the governing body, the agency, may, if necessary, continue the tabulation at a different time or location accessible to the public, provided the governing body announces the time and location at the hearing, which is now. And I believe Ms. Lewis has already indicated that the tabulation will take place tomorrow morning, 9:00, June 7, 2023, here in City Council Chambers. An impartial person may use technological methods of tabulating the assessment ballots, including, but not limited to, punch card or optically readable, i.e. barcoded, assessment ballots. During and after the tabulation, the assessment ballots and the information used to determine the weight of each ballot shall be treated as a disclosable public record, as defined under Government Code Section 7920.530, and equally available for inspection by the proponents and the opponents of the proposed assessment. The ballots shall be preserved for a minimum of two years, after which they may be destroyed as provided under the Government Code. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there an end time to the tabulation period tomorrow? It begins at 9:00 a.m. Does that go on to a specific time, or just until you're done counting the ballots?
Just until we're done counting, and we're aiming for 5:00, so we can be prepared for the 6:00 meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, our speakers, please.
Okay, first Raymond Klein, to be followed by James Semien.
Less than 45 days ago. It's important to understand the history of the city in terms of the downtown. When I bought my property on Jackson Street, I found out that the city had proposed a block assessment district to provide parking at the urging of the downtown businesses. This was done without the participation of the downtown resident. Whoops, you did it again. We hastily formed a downtown homeowners' association, and I was elected president. We hired a lawyer, and the city backed off the plan. We're not going to be afraid to do that again because of inconsistencies. The next attempt was the Central Business District Redevelopment Plan. The city hired consultants to aid the CBD redevelopment committee to beautify it. I served on the committee to develop the plan. We developed a grandiose plan with trees and bluestone sidewalks, lighted pergolas with piped-in music and traffic-calming structures to encourage pedestrian use. When the project cost was factored, the tax increment was not sufficient to pay for these improvements. And the bluestone sidewalks were deemed so expensive, so bricks were ordered as a replacement. The installation of these particular bricks required stonemasons from Italy to come in and do it. They were set in stand and not mortared in place, a very poor decision in earthquake-prone California. Stamped concrete would have been more durable and less expensive. And the bricks did shift, and kind of upset the tree grates. You came and planted trees. You put trees in my planting strip, and you drilled into my sewer lateral, and I was dumping raw sewage into the street. All right? We fixed it at our expense because the city argued with me about little things. You came back a couple of months later and drilled PVC irrigation pipes in there, filled them with rock, and did the same thing to the sewer lateral again.
Sir, I need you to wrap in 30 seconds, please.
I traveled five hours. Please give me extra time to come here and speak to you. I have a 46-year experience.
Sir, I understand and I appreciate you being here. I just have to treat everyone the same, so...
West Texas Street is the heart of Fairfield. It's where all our parades and festivals are held. These activities bring in sales tax...
And your time is up, sir.
What?
Your time is up. Go ahead and give your final closing statement. Not reading, just like five seconds, just wrap it up.
Okay, West Texas Street is a community... Okay, West Texas Street is a community asset. It is not a local asset, as opposed to all these other things. We need to treat it as a community asset and have the community pay for it, not tax the people in it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
James Semien, to be followed by Bernadette Curry.
Hello, Madam Vice Chair.
Good evening.
To the council. I'm here, I live in Paradise Valley. I've been living there for the last 23 years. I bought the home new. When we got entered into this contract to purchase our home, we understood the cost and everything that was associated with it, which things have been fine. So, over the last few years, we've noticed just constant deterioration of landscaping and especially roughly around COVID. Everything just started turning brown. The city just not coming out to handle landscaping, downed trees, stuff like that. Luckily, our association that we live in, they're informed. And everybody understands cost goes up. But I just feel that the way the city has handled everything, and I'm not sure if the city council was aware of it at the time, but it's hard to believe that they're not. And if they weren't, your staff is not informing you guys. I'm sure you guys live in Fairfield. When you drive home every night, you look at your community. You live in certain homes because that's where you want to live. They look nice, and we all feel the same way. So I don't appreciate, you know, or the mishandling of funds. We all pay in every single year to our taxes on time. We expect a certain respect from our community or from our city government. And I just feel it's mismanagement. And now you're coming to us. You sent out flyers about the meeting, about increasing the fees. And the way that was handled, it was super vague. The way that the mailing came to the home, the ballot was fine, but when you read the front page, it left many questions. You don't know if you're paying an additional or if the old one drops off. There was a $500,000 loan to Paradise Valley. How is that going to be handled? So that, from what I understand, from myself, I had to make phone calls. And I'm a fairly intelligent person, and it still had many questions to ask. And it just needs to be handled much better. And you guys are coming to us. And the only positive thing I heard out of this is an oversight committee. Now, if that's granted, if this goes through and is granted, I think that's a great step. But it needs to have some accountability. You just don't have an oversight committee, and then there's no actions, no.
Sir, I need you to wrap in 20 seconds, please.
We come to you, and there needs to be stuff done. So if there's an oversight and say, look, this is happening, we need something to be done. And there needs to be consequences if it's not done. Somebody needs to be held accountable. And that's why we come to the City Council. So that's all I have to say. So hopefully, it passes, and then we're represented through an oversight committee. And I encourage you all to take a walk out through Paradise Valley, look at the landscape, and I'm sure you can do that in your own community as well.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Bernadette Curry, to be followed by Sheila Tucker.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Bertani, members of the councils, city staff. Thank you. My name is Bernadette Curry, here before you once again. I want to first thank staff for listening to some of our concerns. The modification to Waterman, obviously, I'm in Waterman Highlands. I said that before at the April meeting. I'm raising this concerns because I am on the property side, on the other side of the hill from the Civic Liano. Our properties, there's four properties in the Waterman Highlands that are so uniquely situated that I think that the current methodology is just not applicable to this particular district. The Engineers Report is trying to put us all in the same category, and it does not do an adequate job of describing the implications of changing our lot size, even though that is an assessable area that has been included. We did get some recognition for the fact that our properties are unbuildable above 140 feet. However, our properties in this new modified Engineers Report does not account for the area of land that we cannot build upon. City sewer district has an easement right through our property. We have an earthquake fault that we cannot build upon. We have SID that has an easement on the back canal. I believe, although I do not know for sure, that my neighbor to the back, to the east of us also has the same limitation. However, the assessment methodology does not take that into account. And as such, we are unduly burdened by how this methodology has spread across all of the parcels. The problem is, is that in your process, you have the ability to then, we can petition and have it reduced. However, that means that until such time, we are subsidizing other parcels, which I do believe is problematic under 218, and therefore subject to legal challenge. And then the bigger problem is that it then goes to the general fund. And so that the general fund is then subsidizing those parcels, the amount that should be spread over the rest of the parcels. So I ask you once again to reconsider for Waterman Highlands. I think you have some significant issues in terms of your own methodology. I think that there needs to be more parcels that are actually included in the district. I believe the district is too small. It should be including parcels on Hillborne and on Waterman to the south of Waterman. And most importantly, I think your general benefit is unbelievably skewed. As I said before in April, I've seen many of your campaign signs on that corner. And to the extent that the campaign signs go in that area of general benefit, I think that the general benefit should be actually subsidizing that particular maintenance cost. So again, I ask you not to move forward with Waterman Highlands, to give it another look, to go back and actually assess them properly, and to address some of the legal issues that you have with the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Sheila Tucker, to be followed by Dr. Cornelius Elms.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Council members. I'm Sheila Tucker. I've lived in Fairfield for over 30 years. I live in Rolling Hills, and I've lived there for 28 years. And I love living there. I am not against paying an assessment amount. When it first came out, the amount that was stated was around $350. And then I got my ballot, and it was all of a sudden 878. Now, my main question is, why is there such a difference in how the assessments are being put upon the residents? Why is it not more equitable across the board? Melrose, school bonds, you know, those are all the same. And this assessment would also incur a 2% increase on an annual basis. So I have a large lot, but I'm not asking the city to mow my lawn. I'm just trying to get the planting strip taken care of and the road to be taken care of. It's so dark on Hillborne at night that my headlights on my car automatically come on all the time when I'm driving late at night. So I don't know if you're going to get another light out there or not. And I do have to say that I just think it would be a fiscal disaster to let so many areas go without proper maintenance. And I feel like scare tactics are being used on us. I mean, so if this doesn't pass, how is that going to encourage more business and more citizens to move to Fairfield? It's like sending a message that the City Council doesn't care if this thing doesn't pass. So I want to work with the city to resolve this issue in a fair and equitable way. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Dr. Cornelius Elms. And then lastly, Bill McCombe. And I do have one hand raised as well.
Dr. Cornelius?
Dr. Cornelius Elms? No? Perhaps he left. And then Bill McCombe, I wasn't sure, do we call him up again? He spoke, but during, he was.
Oh, is he the gentleman with the ballot question?
Yes.
Yeah, he can, if he wishes, I guess. Right?
Is he still here, Bill?
Oh, I see, he's gone. Okay.
Okay. And then I have one hand raised online.
Okay.
Bill or Valeria, could you bring that person online? Thank you.
Okay, you have three minutes.
All right, hello there. My name is Robert, Robert Taylor. I have a statement, a couple of questions. The first statement is, the Madam Vice Mayor, you indicated that you had done a walk around the Rolling Hills area and that it looked pretty good to you. And I wanted to agree that I have seen that the service has begun to do even a better job. And so it's great to be able to drive on Hillborne and through our community and see that things are getting better. Couple of questions. Within the LLMD number seven, for the Rolling Hills area, I'm just curious, how many homes were considered in the assessment? That may have been written somewhere, but I don't know where to find that. How many homes were considered within the assessment? The second question is, were apartment renters or businesses within the area also included in the assessment? Because there are a number of apartment dwellers as well as businesses along the Hillborne Road. And then lastly, I would like to just say thank you to the city for the goats and the sheep services that came out to cut down or eat down a lot of the growing, yeah. And it was fun to be able to walk out and see them, take our grandchildren to see them as well. So thank you for those services. Those are my comments and questions.
Thank you. Chris, do you want to address those questions? Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. I was just going to take a look at the Engineers Report to try to figure out the exact number of parcels, but I want to say it's around 1,100 homes that were considered in the Rolling Hills area. So I want to say it's 1,100 to 1,200 homes. Apartments and businesses, yes, those were also considered by parcel. So if a business, I know there's that corner where the real estate office is. If it's one building but several businesses, it's just the parcel owner responsible for the assessment that would be receiving the ballot. And then as far as the apartment goes, that's the same kind of deal. The apartments are all on one parcel, so it would be one ballot for that parcel.
Okay, thank you. So are there any other comments on this item? That young lady has her hand up there. Ma'am, did you fill out a speaker card? Okay, you can do it afterwards. Go ahead. Just please fill it out before you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to me. I'm talking about Rancho. And my concern with Rancho was that it was very confusing to drill down for a couple of reasons. You have always assessed this particular issue with one fee for every home. Now, it's each house has a totally different amount to pay based on size of the lot, size of the house, and then one other issue. So it really made it very confusing and not sure where the fairness is there. Because they all really do the same thing. They're all basically pretty much the same size. But there's a real difference in price. And then the other thing was the budget, trying to figure out where the money was going to go, comparing last year's budget to this year's budget. They're totally different. You can't compare item for item or bucket for bucket because they're so different. There's a large tree fund that was never there before. So it makes it really confusing to understand and to be able to, you know, get where you're coming from and where the money's going to go. And I think it's important that, you know, we be able to understand and understand where it's going and why one home should pay more than another home. And does that home get more of a vote than the other house? Because it's bigger, it's paying more. Is their vote worth more or is their vote worth less? Kind of interesting questions. But thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, ma'am, could you fill out the card, please? Thank you.
Okay, so are there any other public comments? Sir, would you like to speak on this? Okay, have you filled out a speaker's card?
My.
Okay, come on up to the mic, and then you can fill one out before you go.
Good evening to you all.
Good evening.
I noticed that it was over $80,000 spent to do the study for the assessment. I'd like to know where that money came from and who approved it and whose authority was used to appropriate those funds, which it seems to me, and the way I understand it, is that the $80,000 plus came from actual funds that were dedicated to the landscape. So I'm curious, where is that money come from? Was that money that tacked on to the loan, the $412,000 that you guys lent the assessment district? Or, but I'd like to know where the money came from. Also, one of the things you keep pushing is that you will require additional funds because we will need additional staff. And one of the things you keep pushing is, we're going to have more money. We're not going to go with the lowest bidder, and therefore, we should have an improved contractor, which supposedly will do a better job. If that's the case, why do we need more additional staff? It doesn't make sense. And the lot size was also used to determine the assessment. I have the largest lot where I live in Rolling Hills, but the width of my lot is the same as my next-door neighbor. So how can the lot size be determined? It doesn't make sense. Because I'm paying more than my neighbor next door, even though my lot is bigger. But the area that you guys are going to maintain or the contractor is, is not any bigger than his. And so why am I having to pay considerably more money than my next-door neighbor? And also, I found out just a little while ago that my daughter has not received a ballot. And so would ballots send out to, say, for instance, absentee landlords? If some of those houses are rentals, whether the ballot is mailed to the owner, wherever they reside, or whether they send out to the renter? I should like to know that from the contractor because there's a lot of questions that I have, especially using landscaping funds to hire a contractor. Those funds should have been used for maintaining the landscaping, not to push the agenda the council and the districts are trying to push on. So I should like to, I'd like to know where the source came from, especially from the attorney and the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would you please fill out your speaker's card? Hand it in. Thank you. All right. Do we have any more speakers? Ma'am, did you fill out a speaker's card? Okay, thank you.
Hi, I live in the Waterman District. We're not opposed to paying more because my husband actually did the math, and it wouldn't pay three landscapers an annual salary for what we're all paying now. So we understand. There needs to be an increase. But there are three very large lots that were excluded. I believe another speaker talked about that in another meeting. The property where the Safeway is, the business.